...by Frank Loegger. He signed in the front of the book, he signed it. Anyone else?
And your colleagues can't hear you either, so that's...
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 16th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the emergency exits around the room. And now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Jeffrey Groves Estates. The applicants are seeking to re-subdivide an already-approved subdivision. They're essentially swapping nine single-family homes that were approved many years back for nine townhomes. The rest of the site represents 38 townhomes. The board has been carefully evaluating this all along. I'll turn it over to the applicant representatives. Welcome back, Mr. Watts.
Good evening. Brian Watts from M.A. Day Engineering here on behalf of Jeffrey Groves Estates. As stated, the -- this is an original subdivision was approved by this town board. Maybe not the active members here, this is a -- goes back a little bit.
You'd be surprised where I was born.
On 2007, for a 47-lot subdivision inclusive of two hammerhead-style right-aways, the western Blair Road here was townhomes, and Daniel's Way here was nine residential lots. All of the non-residential lots had access on Daniel's Way. There is a pond here, you can't see it anymore from the road due to the overgrowth, but there were three homes in between the pond and North Cross Road, two homes between Daniel's Way and the pond, three -- two more between the pond and the north end of the property, and two more up here on the very high end of the hill. It was reaffirmed in 2013, and we've been working on the wastewater treatment plant located here. That is to serve both properties, there will be no septic on here. The water will be extended from Mountain View Road, I believe it is, up North Cross. In that time, the applicant is seeking to re-subdivide those nine individual residential lots into townhomes to match Blair Road. They will consist of 12 townhomes, six townhomes in two separate buildings, and the balance of the land that's not included in those subdivisions will be absorbed by the open-space lots. This was one open-space lot here. The other one was actually in the center, and there's an easement on this one for the benefit of the neighbor, a viewshed easement for that pond. Other easements on the properties will be dissolved as needed, they were just for common driveway access and utilities. Just showing that the -- the new plan substantially reduces the impervious coverage on the site in the area of disturbance, and it also reduces wetlands disturbance. The wetlands are federal. Those are eliminated because we no longer have common driveway access crossing in the areas of the pond. This is the area that is no longer going to be disturbed that was part of the original approval.
Ma'am, you'll have an opportunity to speak shortly. Thanks.
The -- I'll show this quick again. The area for the subdivision is limited to Daniel's Way and the lots that were associated with that road, and the open-space easement right here, and the lots that will be absorbed by those. Blair Road will not change in any way, with the exception of increasing sidewalks from four feet as originally approved to five feet. The townhomes will not change. The infrastructure along this whole section, essentially outlined by the stream corridor here over, will not change. Daniel's Way is not changing in any way from the approval. Stormwater management will remain with the pond here. Utilities will still run up in the middle of Daniel's Way. The sewer and water will just tie into those already-approved utilities. A little bit closer shot of the proposed subdivision. It's much more -- disturbance that remains is now much more consolidated. This is the area of the pond. Again, these are stone walls existing to remain on-site. Daniel's Way will remain as-is. The location of the entrance, and all those design elements will remain the same. We're proposing a sidewalk to match Blair's Way. Our intent is that this will match Blair's Way in substance and function. There will be some landscaping similar to what was previously approved. Was previously approved, we had street trees. We have actually added additional ones, given that we have a little bit more concentration of development here now than it was before. Mostly deciduous trees with some evergreen trees here to break the building up somewhat to shield these -- so they look like they're separate and kind of nestled into the surrounding area, and to help block the pump station here. This is for sewage. Sewage will by gravity feed to the pump station. Pump station will go to the wastewater treatment plant. That aspect is part of the original approval. Lighting, we are proposing two lampposts in Blair's Road, 12-foot-high, very typical type 12-foot-high light fixtures. They will look very similar, actually, to the lampposts that are in this parking lot, acorn-style lighting fixtures. They will be -- I want to say they call them like dark sky. The light will be in the cap so that we don't have any upward reflection.
And they are dark sky?
Yes. Thank you. This is the wastewater treatment plant. That's actually not by our office, but we are showing it just because it is a part of the -- part of the approval, because some of it's changing, the building's changing a little bit. It's smaller. The infrastructure is now underground. You won't see any of it. There'll be some caps, but it'll be -- you won't see it. This fence is part of the original approval. We are not proposing to expand beyond that fence in any way. So everything is still contained as it was originally. The location of the road is the same spot. Landscaping, we're not showing any, we're not proposing any at this time, but it is open for the planning board later if they feel it's needed to revisit that, and we can adjust that as everyone sees fit. Wastewater treatment plant, relatively simple but very nice building for what it is. Front elevation, this is what you would see from North Cross Road. This is what you would see if you're facing the building, the left side, the right side, and the rear of the building. This will be vinyl siding with a brick veneer around the base and white trim. Intent is to match the townhouses, which again will be -- this would represent one building, a building having six units in it. This is what you would see from Daniel's Way, and we do have a color rendering from the architect. If you're pulled into Daniel's Way, the homes would be on your right-hand side. That would be the east side of the subdivision, and we do have -- we're going to have the stones with the matching vinyl siding, some nice bump-outs. The elevations will be broken up a little bit, so it's not one continuous building. These are his initial renderings, but they're very close to what we envision here. So I think that summarizes most of it.
Thank you, Brian, for that very thorough summary, yes. Before I actually open the public hearing and call for public comment, first, the road is changing, ma'am. That's correct. I'll also add quickly that the board in general tends to find changes in applications like this where development is drawn in and there's less disturbance to an area, so we have more open space, a benefit to the community. We'll go into that later on. So the way this works usually is I'll ask for comments from the consultants in the board, then off the public hearing, and take any of your questions, et cetera. It's a pleasure to have someone come out, because we haven't had someone, anybody, out on this application for a long time. So thank you again, Mr. Watts. And by the way, one of the reasons why we haven't really looked at landscaping around the wastewater treatment facilities, because it's probably the most attractive building we've had in my 12 years up here to house something like that. And I think we'd all prefer that anything around that area stayed more naturalistic as opposed to ultra-manicured around it, because then it tends to draw the eye toward a structure. Comments, Ms. Axelson?
Just quickly, we did a comprehensive review previously and discussed that with the board at a prior meeting. We've had an offline meeting and then issued some annotated comments, and, you know, again, I appreciate the compact design and avoiding disturbance to environmentally sensitive areas.
Thank you. Ms. Paladoro?
No new comments.
Thank you for talking into the microphone. Ms. Wise, are there any comments?
Nothing new.
Mr. Murphy?
No new comments.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
Just echoing Ms. Axelson, I do appreciate the new compact design and the lesser disturbance and the beautiful architecture for a wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
No new comments.
Ms. Natalie?
Kudos for a lovely design. I wouldn't -- and it's not for this meeting, and my apologies that I came unprepared, but I do have some suggestions possibly down the road for some different colors besides the pale yellow that might make it look a little bit more contemporary-looking to go with the design.
Thank you. Ms. Axelson, you have some color samples. Believe me, it's -- the board's coming very into colors lately. It's because we had a rash of vanilla design, not the design was vanilla in style or taste that it was all beige for a while. So making a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Now, ma'am, if you'd like to come up, just you can stay seated with them, just please state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Peggy McKeown, and I live right across the street from the water treatment.
Go ahead and have a seat.
Is that McKew?
McKeown, M-C-K-E-O-N.
Thank you.
Please speak into the mic.
Okay. The water treatment plant is directly across from my house, and as far as I can tell, it looks like it's 75 feet in. Is that -- I couldn't really tell the scale from the road.
Does anyone have -- do you have a scale?
I have one.
Ms. Axelson usually travels.
I'm looking.
Mr. Didiot, do you happen to have a scale?
I have a chart turning.
Nope.
Keep on heading.
Of course, it's more than I didn't write mine, so I can't find it.
She has witnesses.
Were you looking at just the building itself, or the fence, or?
Brian, use the microphone. It's already queued up.
Which particular part of the?
I'd like the closest thing to be the farthest away it could be.
Well, there is a chain-linked fence located approximately 60 feet from North Cross Road. And then beyond that, 100 feet would be about the area where the pavement starts. Then we are exceeding the length of this rule, but 100 -- a little over 150 feet to the corner of the building.
Okay.
It appears.
Okay.
And our code, ma'am, requires that chain-linked fences, even security perimeter fences, be black, not silver, so it shouldn't be intrusive.
Okay. And I --
I'm a mom, so.
Go ahead.
I had a couple more. So in the -- in this letter I got, it says 12 residential townhouse lots. Does a lot mean a unit?
A lot is the parcel that the lot will be on.
A lot. The one townhouse building consists of six units. The common wall would be one of the property lines. It would extend from the right-way to the rear of the property. In this case, we're holding one of -- a similar line to what was originally approved.
Maybe bring the memo so McKeown can see exactly what you're referring to.
Okay. My -- I don't -- I just want to make sure we're not going to have 12 times 6. It's going to be 12.
No.
Because it says residential townhouse lots.
Right.
So I didn't know what a lot was.
Each lot is one unit.
Okay.
The line essentially is the unit and the backyard and the front yard.
Okay, okay. That's fine. I have a couple of questions of just the water treatment plant. Because of the years and years of living here and going by Maris College, and when the water treatment plant is not working, it stinks. Is there a smell? Is there noise?
So Department of Health, County Department of Health generally approves these. That's what they've been working on back and forth, actually. And what I can tell you is that the affluent, that the water that comes out, an engineer will help. Many engineers have been up here before and held it up in a champagne glass and said you could drink it. Now, we usually say try it, and they don't. But it's clear, and there shouldn't be any odor associated with it as long as it's functioning normally.
Okay.
If it stops functioning normally and you smell scent, then that would be the time that you would call up someone and say, I think this is not working.
Okay.
In addition, Department of Health is pretty good about catching this.
Okay.
We -- the condominiums that you see, Hyde Park Ledge's condominiums, they've been under a consent decree to replace their wastewater treatment plant for three years.
At least.
We've been appro -- well, longer than three. We've been approving it. Part of the problem there was money, but more importantly, it's been that they were trying to get the Water and Wastewater Authority of the county to take it over. That's a different bidding mechanism. And then when they really looked, after the county said no, and they looked at what the cost was, they've now come back to us, we just approved a smaller, I'll say, less expensive than a Cadillac design, but here, I believe you're getting a very high design. Yeah. So there shouldn't be any sense associated with it.
And I have a well. Is it any effect to my well?
The water, you mean a drawdown on your well?
Yeah, yes.
No, they're required to be on -- they're part of the Water and Wastewater District, or Water District, I'm sorry, that goes all the way up Statsburg. They're in the district, so they're required to be, so their water will be supplied just like everyone else is down here out of the Hudson.
And what about -- I don't know where the water from the waste treatment plant goes.
Well, that's what dictated the location. There's a -- I'll let Brian talk about that. He's better at this than me.
I don't know about that. You are very good at this, actually, so.
Thank you.
The wastewater is pumped along off the side of North Cross Road into the treatment plant, and then the discharge, after it goes through the necessary processes, is right up here. We're going to go from the manhole, and we're going to discharge right over here into the Indian Kill intermittent stream area there.
Okay.
After it's -- yes, after it's treated.
In other words, this receives several, I guess I'll say polishing treatments, and so the -- in order to discharge it into the Indian Kill, it has to be treated pretty thoroughly, because that's a direct discharge into the Hudson from the Indian Kill.
Okay. And the only other thing, I think I could -- I saw it online on page 10, is the option of if we need to, the building having to have vegetation or whatever around it to shield it.
Yeah, if you, as a neighbor, believe that we should have additional screening, we can require that.
Okay. I'm until I see it, I don't know. It might be beautiful, and I'm --
We would need to require the screening before it goes up. That's part of -- their approval would dictate everything they have to do.
Okay.
So if you think that there should be screening, I mean, part of, I think, what we were believing is there's a lot of natural vegetation that's going to exist between the road and the structure. And again, if we require a lot of landscaping, it usually makes people look at something because they keep it mowed and trimmed and clipped and hedged. This way, you'd have a natural vegetative barrier from your side and also from people who drive up and down the road.
Right.
We think -- I personally believe that these are attractive structures, whatever color they ultimately wanted being, and so we thought that that's what people would want to see, is just the houses rather than anything else.
Right.
But if you think there needs to be more, just let us know.
Okay, I'll go measure.
Do you have a preference on the color?
Now that I know the scale, I'll --
Okay.
Well, I actually like it to be a color that blends in, so you can't see it.
That's -- we tend to, for screening purposes, require natural tones, browns, earth tones, creams, et cetera, and that's why the chain-linked fence is supposed to always be black when it's a security perimeter fence, so that it blends in with the scenery, particularly during the winter when it's sleep off.
Yeah. Okay, that's all the questions I had. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming out. I hope we've helped you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being none, no additional comments. Would you like us to adjourn this, too, because you're the one with the busy schedule?
I'd.
No apologies. We recognize you have other clients. Uh-oh.
Well.
Okay, that's your most important client from now on.
He's doing fine.
Would you like us to -- do you want us to adjourn this for two weeks? Because you would have to submit something by?
Tuesday.
Yeah, by Tuesday.
I'm trying as quickly as I can. My goal is Tuesday.
We have three weeks, so he could submit next Tuesday rather than tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
We couldn't hear you?
We were commenting whether the extra week gave them any additional time for submissions, and Cynthia said the date would have passed if not for the third week already.
Right, so if you can get --
I'm trying to get a quality encompassing submission and not just something for the sake of a submission.
Let me put it this way, each time we open a public hearing up here, while the consultants are here, there's a little bit of a chink going in, a drip of money. So it's up to you as to whether you think you'd like for us to do it in two -- our next meeting in three weeks, or the June, the 20th meeting.
What's the three weeks?
June 6th.
June 6th.
Well, if Brian can do it, then it'll be great.
Again, once -- if we set it, but if we set a public --
It's a time to speak up with all these witnesses, so I can't hurt you.
It's a matter of when do we adjourn the public hearing, too.
Right.
That's really what we're looking for at this point.
Are we getting final architecturals, too?
I would --
Elevation?
Have the June 20th.
Well, the only question I have with the board is if you're going to have the public hearing.
Microphone.
If you're going to have the public hearing, and would you be able to act after that based on assuming that the M.A. Day's submission is?
I should add that we received comments from DC Gushes County Planning, because this is also a site plan in addition to re-subdivision. It was a matter of local concern, so essentially no comments. So if he's addressed most of Ms. Axelson's comments, we might. Uh-oh, you're shaking your head?
I honestly, we're talking about a submittal date in a couple days.
No, no. We adjourned the public hearing to June.
Why don't we make the mystery out? We'll make it June 20th.
We're talking about adjourned the public hearing to June 20th.
I think, okay, fine.
And then in that time, I might actually be able to address Ms. Paladoro's legal matters.
Well, some of these can be made.
Have less conditions at the approval.
Yeah.
Sure, that makes me happy.
Some can be less conditions. We actually already drafted a series of conditions.
I sent -- I provided some draft conditions to Mr. Kaufman. Some of them have no choice but to be conditions.
Right.
Because you can't file until after the plat is signed, I mean, until after the plat is approved. But yeah, we can work through them. We need to have a meeting with the town attorney to go over some of the items, or at least a conference call.
I know that we were thinking about phasing notes as well.
Yeah, I think that's another reason why, you know, I feel like there will be another submittal. There's likely to be another offline meeting, et cetera, and I think it would be, make more sense to have the time to iron out these details before we try.
Plus, as I understand it, you're still working with Department of Health on the wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah, they have -- the sewer treatment plant, the new design has been submitted, the new engineer's report has been submitted. I am told by Department of Health that, you know, they would get to it right away. I'm not sure what that means, though.
Our experience is right away means --
I'm always optimistic.
Right away in our experience, there sometimes means six weeks, so.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping that's not the case. So let's just make it the 20th and see if we can wrap up.
Making a motion to adjourn.
We convene in the 20th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you on June 20th, and as soon as you get the minutes, anytime you do, we'll start working on the review.
I'm going to get them in as soon as I --
There you go.
Nice.
This way you don't have to commit to the exact day.
I don't want anyone to be wasting anyone's resources if we can get more stuff done in one shot.
Okey-dokey.
I want to make sure we get this right.
And you'll have final elevations as well for the architectural renderings? Because you mentioned that they were in flux.
No, that was the rendering, the elevations are the elevations.
Okay.
Okay.
So just his rendering was in flux.
The well wasn't really in flux.
The rendering doesn't show the slight two-foot elevation.
Okay.
That's it. That is.
So nothing else, though, is changing?
No, no, the bump-outs, the facade, just the slight offsets aren't well-represented in that, but they are in the site plan. The intention is to include that.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll see you and have a happy Memorial Day in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is continue public hearing for the Locusts Rural Event Venue. Making a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. For those in the audience, this application has been reviewed extensively by the board, as well as a series of offline meetings, but in essence, the applicants are seeking approval under a law that was expressly written for us to review these kinds of events for large sites. The location is 83 Penny Lane, 135 Olpos Road, and 34 Strawberry Fields on Statsburg. It's a little over 76-acre site. The areas that would be used for temporary structures, parking, and emergency access form a tiny iota of all that. The site is surrounded by state parks. There are very few, if any, private residences adjacent or nearby, and we've discussed sound attenuation, hours, safety, pulling building permits for tents, many, many, many things. So I will let you guys have the floor.
Inclement weather.
Inclement weather, yes. So I'll let you guys have the floor.
Well, we do have progress to report. I believe that the building inspector has issued a report to the planning board about the completion of site improvements.
Not only did he issue an email, something in writing, but he called me today in a meeting to say that the last one he referred to was taken care of, so we're done.
Yes.
Congratulations.
So we're very appreciative of that and of the building department's cooperation. Really appreciate that very much. We're continuing to work through the contacting of Amtrak and CSX, and I won't take the board's time to recount all of the phone calls that Andy has made, but to get to brass tacks, we have consented to the continuation of this public hearing until the next meeting. I received a letter from John Marvin. I've spoken to John today, told him that our client, Andre Belage, has had a relationship with Christopher Schultz going on for many years, and we're more than happy to agree to an extension to allow him to have a full opportunity to review the plan. So that's with our consent, and we've agreed that we're going to discuss the matter in the meantime and see that all the concerns are addressed.
And I'd also just like to add that Mr. Marvin, I don't believe he's ever appeared before the board, if I may polish our halos for a moment. I think we did a pretty good thorough job of reviewing. The issues that he raised are all ones that we raised as well way back when and have sort of, I think, plod our way through. In essence, we're down to just a couple of things. Mr. Didiot today told me that he was in contact with someone at Amtrak. They took over the lease of the tracks apparently four years back from CSX, and there have been inspections done. Mr. Sotero is going to be speaking with Mr. Schumpert, I believe it is, and Mr. Didiot in a conference call. I've asked Mr. Sotero to write a memo up. I've also sent a note out saying we would love to have something from Amtrak. I know that they are quasi-governmental. It's a corporation wholly owned by -- all shares owned by the United States government. Worthless shares that would be, I believe, but I'm not sure if it's foilable, but they're going to be discussing with their legal department what they're allowed to release. We did --
Right. I mean, the report can be redacted if there's some concern, some safety concern or something for.
I don't believe there is.
Victoria, we don't disagree with you at all. We are trying to get these records, so.
Right. Well, I mean, just to let you know that if it comes with some black lines on it, that's going to be okay. All we're really looking for is identification of the bridge and something saying pass. And I think at this point, that would be sufficient.
We're on the same page.
Yes, so, and then once we have here public comment, what, Mr. Schultz, the neighbor, was apparently in the hospital and unable to review it substantially enough. I hope Mr. Marvin's reviewing the entire record, watching our meetings or something?
Yes, when I spoke to him today, I suggested that he watch the record of the meetings. His client had received directly from our client the latest submission, all the maps, as well as prior discussions about it. But I told John that there may, there are the maps, the full maps, that were in our, the notebook that we submitted, that weren't resubmitted with the most recent one, and that we would make a notebook available to him, as well as full-size plans, so. And John assured me that he would work to make sure that all issues that he wanted to bring to everyone's attention would be done well in advance of the meeting on June 6th. And we are fortunate that we have three weeks, even though there's a holiday in there. So I think we're moving forward in a collegial way, which we certainly want to do with a neighbor and friend of long standing.
Absolutely.
Is there an opportunity, then, if it is very collegial, for you to get an easement, rather than this letter of permission?
That's among the issues that we're going to discuss.
Because obviously, that's preferred. And what we talked about with the board at our offline meeting was the emergency access road crosses the Scholz property. So if they give us a letter of permission, if it's ever withdrawn, it means the special use permit's gonna automatically be revoked. So if they ever, if there's a new owner and they give the town notice that, you know, not allowed to cross our property anymore, the special use permit will be revoked. If it's an easement, obviously, it's more permanent. And of course, for emergency access, if anyone ever needed it, it wouldn't really prevent a fire truck from crossing the property. But because the law specifies that we need two formal exits or egresses, then-
Correct.
That's where we're moving.
I also want to take an opportunity to thank both of you and say how impressed all of us were. I mean, Ms. Axelson got comments on, I think, May 14th to you. And May 15th, we had new plans and a response memo. I don't see work-
Well, we were hoping we were getting to the, yeah.
We know, and I think we're there. I think we're there. It's the neighbor who kind of threw the wrench into the works, because I believe Mr. Sotero would have taken time off to make, to have spoken today with Amtrak if he had to. He had another meeting set up, but he could have taken a window of opportunity there, so. Ms. Axelson, comments?
Yeah, actually, I was impressed how quickly that submittal came in. And I tried to return the favor by going through all the comments and the response letter today. And many of the items were addressed. And, let's see. The only, I know the one thing I'd asked for was materials on the sign, which is wood, I assume. So that's all we're looking for there. But then the other thing, there was a comment that we had been making from the beginning, and it was that a lot of the code issues that we raised in our comments ended up going into the Rural Event Management Plan. And the understanding I always had had was that that Rural Event Management Plan would become plan notation. Then all the stuff that showed the code compliance and how you were dealing with that in the management plan would just go on there. So I also sat and I looked at the plans and I said, "How could it fit?" And it looks like it will fit. And the thing is, I noticed that you did a, like a parking detail, which I don't know if somebody else asked for that. In other words, delineating spaces, which I didn't think we ever needed, didn't ask for in my comments. And if that's something the board wants, that's fine.
I believe the reason why I did it was to show the number of spaces in each location.
Just to show that that area was big enough.
It's grass parking, it's not going to be somehow striped.
Which is fine, you know, my feeling was I could take a scale and measure it and see that they were gonna be able to fit the parking spaces in that they said. And so that's why I never asked for it. So as far as I'm concerned, that, we don't need that on the plans, but that's up to the board. So basically, the main thing that I had left was the issue of the R E M P, which I think is in great shape now, just basically being copied and pasted onto the plans. That's the simplest thing to do.
And when I saw your comment, I apologize, I thought that meant just no reference to the R E M P on one of the drawing pages, which we did, but I understand now it's, the intent is to have the full language.
In case that gets attached and falls out of a file later on, that they can be referenced immediately with the actual file set?
I think we can fit it.
I think so, too.
Fit it on the title page.
And you know, I'm just thinking-
I think so.
It's on five pages. I think it's just five pages.
Yeah, yeah, we've crammed more notes.
Just fit right across the bottom of one of the sheets. And the thing is, I know it seems a little weird, but having worked as a director of planning and worked with the building and, you know, department and the code enforcement officer and all that, having to dig for a separate document, it just doesn't work. And having it all in one place is-
I think Ms. Moss, if she were here, would be very happy to hear that.
Yeah, plus it's, I mean, it's zoning compliance issues, so it's not that.
Yeah, we don't have any objection to it, we just didn't understand the comment.
That's fine.
I thought that it was, it was, you wanted a reference to bind-
Right, understood.
To the plan, so that's what we did. So this is why we have these discussions.
There you go. And that's it. I mean, those are really the, except that Pete's dealing with the Amtrak thing. Those are the biggies for me.
There was one more issue, and I did provide you with the advanced resolution, so you've already seen it. In the area of the Piggery, there's parking spaces that are located close to the property boundary. And the zoning administrator has asked for the boundary to be delineated by some kind of physical barrier, just to prevent cars from encroaching when they, because it's informal parking, it's on strip, there's no curb stops. So boulders, and some bushes, some kind of physical boundary.
Split rail fence, hedge, landscaped hedge. She mentioned several things.
And we're looking for that to be permanent in nature, not just per event?
Oh, yes, something that, in other words, once they're there-
I mean, we don't want you to replant every-
Yeah, but once it's there, in other words-
Even like cones or something on a temporary basis?
No, she was looking for a physical, a more permanent-
Permanent.
To just delineate where the-
Right, and again, a boulder would be fine, something-
This is primarily just because if, as we suspect, these are maybe staff parking there, that we don't want anyone just encroaching-
To just encroach, yeah, that makes sense.
Onto the state property, that's all.
We'll get something natural looking in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you don't want it to be-
We don't want it to look like a wall property line. Well, we'll work it out.
Thank you.
We'll take some tips from the previous side.
Right, again, thank you. Any other comments?
Well, so, okay, so Ms. Axelson was also saying that the parking area A along the southern boundary also has a similar issue.
It's not as close, I don't believe, is it?
It is, it's close, but I'm not sure if there's existing vegetation or something that would differentiate.
We never asked about it because we thought there was wooded area there, so.
It's, it's a treed area, it's more park-like, as you would say. So there are trees, but it's kept mowed or eaten, depending, by some animals underneath it. So there's what I would call a, yes?
Can I look at these?
Sure, that's for the public, sorry. Yes, 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 yes. At any rate, so it's, we can require something there. If we do a sidewalk, or when we do a sidewalk, that might be easier to see there. I know that the area around the Piggery is somewhat cleared up, just because of its use. The area, parking area A is not, there are no structures around it or anything else. So I wasn't thinking to add natural vegetation, but we can take a look at that. Any other comments from consultants? Nope, thank you. Any comments from the board?
No.
Nope.
I asked for a site, or asked to schedule a site. I know it takes a while, so don't worry.
There were so many emails today about dates and meetings, my head is spinning.
I apologize.
What my schedule is.
This is what happens when Mr. Dupree gets back from a long trip to LA. He has lots of time to handle everything that he needed to do while he was gone. Look, sorry. And all that were on this application, thank you. So at any rate, whenever you get a chance to let us know, we can do a sidewalk, we can address that, we can take a look then there.
I think we had the dates of this, perhaps the weekend of the second and the third.
Yep, yep.
And then the other date was the following?
Maybe this weekend, no, maybe this weekend, because we wanted to do it before the 6th, if possible, so.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't want to do it on Memorial Day weekend, because everyone has personal plans and-
Right.
Some of us walk in our parade, et cetera.
Some of us work.
Some of us work. Ooh, not fair.
Yeah, okay, we'll get emails around to our client and get dates back.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, we'll adjourn this to John, may I make a motion?
Michael.
Michael, as far as re-submission, we did make some modifications to the site plan based on Ms. Axelson's comments, as well as to the R E M P. Is the board okay with us just re-submitting full-size plans and hard copies of the R E M P to be inserted into the existing binder?
Do we want another submission, or should we just wait until, until after approval for signature?
It's up to you, but you've already seen the conditions, there aren't that many.
Yeah, no, they're minor.
Okay, so let's not do it.
Wait till the final set.
In other words-
I mean, what is the other coming up?
It's also-
We have to re-submission, but we will be putting the-
I would say that Ted would like me to have one copy at least for the file.
No, no, there will-
No, 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 what we're saying, stop. What we're saying- Cynthia, what we're saying is, we would approve it, then that would come into the file, the, all the final changes we pulled into the other.
I think that's okay.
Instead of having an interim.
Because she would be basing anything she wrote off of the last submission. Right, I'll be basing it on the last submission, so that would be a condition of approval.
Gotcha.
I just, it seems like a waste of paper.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The one that we got yesterday, was it yesterday? It feels like age has to go.
It was yesterday.
Right.
Do you want, what you're saying is you want a printed copy of that? We want a paper copy of that, a hard copy?
No, I'm saying, we have, we have a draft resolution. I could add the R E M P as a condition. That's the only other condition that's come up, as far as I know. But we could wait to see if there are any other conditions before you submit a new set, because a sidewalk may result in an additional tree or fence or something, so.
Okay, but then is the point that after that is done, we would resubmit an entire final set of everything, or just the corrected pages? I think that's your question, right?
Exactly, yeah.
I don't think, you don't have to submit anything until after approval, and then you would submit your sets for signature.
Gotcha.
In other words, we're not, I wasn't anticipating receiving anything else in hard copy until it's-
Done.
Meet time to sign.
Great.
I mean, the board's comments, I went through my notes scriptlessly today, and those are already all answered in your last revisions. The only thing you'd be revising would be to put the event management plan on there and to show whatever barrier you want to come up with. But those would be conditions anyway, so you could wait. I think, I believe what Ms. Whitman was asking, if I'm correct, what you submitted yesterday was only digital. Are you saying that we would like one? I finally figured that out.
I'm having two different copies.
Ms. Moss likes a hard copy for the file. Each time you do a digital submission, we need a hard copy, so you could just send out one for the file?
Sure.
That's all that's necessary, because you didn't make that many changes to it, and you highlighted it.
It's just, it all depends for Ms. Moss. She likes her resolution.
To reference all the revision dates.
Oh, of course.
So as long as Victoria is making reference to the last paper version we have, we could use the revision file.
I didn't realize that hadn't been submitted.
I did, it took me a moment. I decided we weren't being-
Your resolution is based on-
Yesterday.
Yes.
Yesterday's email, then I need your-
So we need a paper copy of that. I realized we weren't really being Keystone Cops, we were just speaking at odd ends.
We were talking about two different things.
Okay, so make a motion to adjourn to June 6th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a happy Memorial Day.
Thanks.
And as soon as you find out about our sidewalk, just let me know, and we'll get it scheduled, okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, did you want to review parts two and three now?
Oh, yes, hold on. Has everyone had an opportunity? We received parts two and three digitally-
I would think you'd be happy with that.
From Ms. Axelson, our consultant, has everyone had a chance to review those? Because we got those in a while back.
Yep.
Then let's stipulate that we agree with the findings. There are no major impacts, they're all minor or moderate. Essentially, there's almost no impacts anyway, because everything's temporary.
No or small.
No or small, I'm sorry, not minor, they changed the language on me. But, so we will incorporate our conclusion that will not require, this will be a, there are no negative, major negative impacts. This will not require the production of an impact statement. It's incorporated into the resolution, as you know. And I want to make sure we did publicly review this for the board tonight, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a workshop. Public hearings are at end, our public comment will be at end. This is the first time that the applicants have appeared before us. This is for long barred and made, it's a lot line realignment. If I can summarize this quickly, in essence, the two neighbors thought that a lot line existed all along, and then when they looked at it more closely, they discovered that, no! Each person had been using a different person's property all along.
Correct.
So we're coming in to clarify that tonight. And this is one of those that I believe seems really easy to the board, because you're just swapping or transferring land from one side to the other. But let me turn it over to you, Mr. Freer.
Okay, yes, we had a, we discovered through a survey that the lot line was not where it was believed to be. So what we are proposing to do is to adjust the lot line so that the, there's appropriate setbacks, that the, that my client's driveway is not on his neighbor's property, which is always a nice thing. And we've, we have submitted a sketch plat. We know there's some modifications, some things that should be put on it, and we will, we'll get to that immediately.
Okay, remember, with a minor subdivision, we accept for sketch, and you go directly to final. There's no intermediary stage. So if it's a major, preliminary and then final, but we'll go to final.
Okay, so for the final?
Yep.
Right.
And we're prepared tonight to classify the subdivision, except for sketch, adopt, and neg deck. Whichever has these notes will be doing that publicly to go through the questions for part two on the E A F.
Correct.
And then we'll be setting a public hearing, and this should go pretty smoothly. And I want to, again, say, by the way, I appreciate the fact that you've been very attentive. We've had lots of offline meetings to discuss this along the way, which is why this should be a, now that we're at the end.
Thank you.
So any question or comments, questions from the consultants? Ms. Axelson wrote a memo, of which we went through it back and forth today. And Ms. Axelson was very nice in actually compiling the little chart to go on there that we showed density.
Yes, thank you very much.
No problem.
So I think that can probably be picked up from it and just attached into the site, the plan set?
Yes, correct.
And I don't believe there are any other substantive comments at all. Just from my, just for the records, one of the comments Ms. Axelson made was about putting monuments, because people, I just realized when I was talking to a layperson today about a monument, he said, "What are you talking about, like a Taj Mahal?" Monuments for surveyors are what appear to be little kind of obelisks, the top of an obelisk with concrete in the ground. It marks corners of property, boundary lines. As it turns out, Ms. Moss does prefer them. But in these cases, for minor lot, minor lot line revisions, the surveyor at the time put in a marker.
Correct.
So we just want to have that shown on site, so Ms. Moss knows it's there. Because those monuments turn out to be pretty expensive. And they're four feet tall, so they've got to be dug down, so there's just a few inches showing, so.
Kind of hard to steal.
Well, it's better that way, because I know, having an old house myself, when I saw the survey, it was, you know, tree stump found, and I thought, there's no tree there anymore, it was dug out. So it's better to have something permanent that you don't have that's organic, et cetera, so. Was that about it, Liz, for your comments?
You know, pardon me, it was a flurry of emails today, but-
Oops.
I don't remember, I don't, we didn't get a new plan.
No, you don't.
So I only replied to whatever the emails were that came across my desk. And there were a bunch of revisions to the bulk regulations table, that I think are pretty straightforward. We discussed the iron pin instead of monument. And it looks like, sorry, just going off the top of my head, yeah, it looks like that's it.
In other words, we, Mr. Freer happened to be here during another meeting, so we were able to discuss this with him directly. Your comments, just to make sure you understood everything. Ms. Paladoro, question, comment?
I guess I just would want to make sure, you are asking for a waiver of showing the full S D S areas, and I just want to make sure that you've confirmed, at least with your own professionals, that you're not going to be having a portion of each other's S D S located on the other lot.
Yes, so is your special assistant.
Where's yours? Right here, right, yeah, yours is right here, so that won't.
I mean, it looks like they're going the opposite direction, but I, you may just want to double check.
Okay, we will.
If that causes problems down the road.
We will, yes.
Yes, if, if his is on your new property, he has to do repair, I wouldn't think so.
It probably is.
It shows it on there, it shows where his is.
But I mean, it just, it doesn't show an outline, it just has a-
Approximate location.
Right, a box, it doesn't show the, right, with a field, right.
What's happened is, we just encountered this not too long ago. When the septic tank was put in, it was actually crossed a property line. And when it went to be repaired, the owner of the other property was quite upset because they just barged in on her property and dug it up. So while they dug it up, it was moved to one site, and we ensured that, so.
Right.
That's, just to make sure.
We will, okay. We will, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
The board could consider granting the waiver request tonight?
For noting the S D S?
Well, apart from the S D S, they asked for some other waivers.
I thought we would just put that in the final resolution.
Okay, we can just put that in the final resolution as well. Well, at least give them guidance on whether you need, you know, they need to provide that additional information or not.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I see what you're saying. Are we interested in granting all the wa, there's not that many waivers, but there are waivers requested.
Right.
Yes. Okay, let me start to my right. Ms. DiNapoli, comments?
Aren't you lucky we don't ask for colors for monuments?
I don't want to be the only one in my neighborhood that had one.
Be the first on the block.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
Yeah, just wanted to ask, Ms. Axelsson, when I read your comment about the, where you showed how Lot 39 was, was and is, I think you met, I think it should have, I saw three 39s and one 41. I didn't see a Lot 39, a Lot 41 was.
That's the trouble with copying and pasting. Yeah, the cell on the far right should have said 41. Did you get, did you receive this email?
I forwarded it to him.
Yes, so the last column, the top of it, should have said Lot 41.
That's what I have on this. On the, on the bulk regulations table?
On the email that I sent.
Oh, on the email, okay.
I inserted a little table.
The one that showed how much was getting transferred.
Oh, got it.
And I was copying and pasting and...
Got it, right, so make sure that's correct.
And is correctly...
I didn't look at that that closely.
You know, I only showed that row for reference to the table you had on the plan.
Correct.
So...
Right, I understand now.
She's right, and just put it in the second row.
Just want to make sure it's correct, for the record.
Right.
Eagle eyes Dexter strikes again.
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Pickett, any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Murphy?
No comment.
Ms. Weiser?
No comment.
I do have one more comment.
Pardon me?
I did have another question.
Yes.
The chart shows that the impervious surfaces, the percentage of the lot covered by impervious surfaces is increasing for both lots.
Yeah, I don't know how that's possible either.
And that didn't make sense logically.
Right, because it should be going down for him, because he's getting more...
Down for one and up for the other, but...
Well...
It does, it does make sense. Does it?
I raised this issue already, and it was explained to me.
Okay.
Yeah, it looked...
I just need an explanation then.
Well, he's...
Okay, so...
I had it the other day. Hang on a second here.
While you do that, wait, while you do that, let me do something else. So, board, the...
That's what it is.
The waiver requests were to, for the sewage disposal system and the water supplies, because they're preexisting and not being modified. The address and the record owner and subdivider, there is no subdivider, requesting waiver of that. The drainage and erosion control plan, or SWIP, they're, I don't believe they needed SWIP on this site, this size anyway, but they're asking for a waiver. And also, they're asking for waivers from the letter, any letters from Department of Public Works or D O T regarding access, because there is no access required from either one, and nothing's changing on either side.
Isn't a SWIP only required if it's more than an acre disturbance?
Yes, yes.
And they're doing none of that?
Yes. And there is no disturbance.
Right.
It's just, this is just a deed line that's changing, that's all. So are we all in agreement that we can grant the waivers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, there's an explanation, which has to do with the area of the driveway.
Right.
As long as, as long as our engineer and planner are happy with the number.
I asked, I raised the question and they answered it for me. I just had forgotten, because this was such a, to me, simple thing, once that was answered.
Just when I looked at the chart, I said, "How is that possible?"
I said the same thing, I promise.
I did the same thing.
I did, I promise, I did the same thing. So, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
So she has the two and three.
Oh, let's go through part two first, yes, I'm sorry.
And will she read each one?
Each one.
Okay. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of or intensity of use of land, no or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community, no or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environment area, C E A, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in adverse change, in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, biking or walkway, no or small impact? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no or small impact? Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public slash private waterways, B, public slash private water wastewater treatment facilities, no or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in the adverse, in an adverse change to natural resources as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems, no or small impact? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So it has been determined by the lead agency, based on information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Everyone's in agreement?
Agreed.
Great. So now who has the resolution? Oh, what am I saying? Anne does.
Excuse me. Keep it going. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution classifying the subdivision, accepting for sketch and adopting a negative declaration, long board mate and Boland lot line alteration, May 16th, 2018, resolution number 2018-22. Whereas, 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 whereas... Whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a minor subdivision and, two, accepts the sketch, plan is adequate for further review by the planning board, and, three, classifies the project as an unlisted action under SECR and determines to conduct an uncoordinated review, and, four, adopts a negative declaration finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do you need a copy of this resolution for any reason?
No.
Okay. Then make a motion to set the public hearing on this for June 6th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you in three weeks. As I keep hearing me say, have a very nice Memorial Day.
You too, everyone. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. If you have any questions, just call.
Great, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request by Wright Homes for a time, extension of the time to meet conditions for signature of the final plat. Ms. Palladaro can tell you that they appear to be moving forward now on the...
What was the major conditions?
They have to have, one of the conditions, have to meet...
Oh, it was a deed restriction, open space, a deed restriction for the open space area. And I have been contacted by an attorney just last week, who was looking to draft this. So I provided him with a copy of the resolution.
If we recall, we, we never, we could not find a copy of a deed restriction before.
Right, right.
So we insisted this time that it must be properly filed, drafted and filed, et cetera, so...
Yeah.
Who has, is everyone agreement? Well, you'll vote. Who has this file?
Me.
Thank you.
Resolution number 16-46C, May 16th, 2018. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of final plat approval to September the 3rd, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Nana's Ice Cream?
Yep.
Nana, Nana?
Nana.
Nana's Ice Cream and Grill. For those of us who've been here a while, this is Ms. Pizzarelli's site that's been Rita's Isis and then renamed, and now it's being renamed again.
It was the 9G barbecue grill, something...
Yeah. The end of Havon Road.
And it's now going to be changed again. I believe there's a new owner. In addition, I have a note from Ms. Whitman to thank Nana's for removing the floppy quote-unquote sign, which I believe means a fluttering, moving sign, which is not allowed under our code.
Oh, good.
Ms. Moss sent a letter, which is why they produce a code-compliant sign. Have we had a chance to review it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And who has this resolution?
I do.
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A (4th)(4th). Nana's Ice Cream and Grill, Resolution 2018-23. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for Nana's Ice Cream and Grill based on the latest revision date, May 1st, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item is for Mr. Ronald Green, located at One Valley View. Does the site plan waiver for a pool fence? I believe, Ms. Whitman, the pool fence already exists, am I correct?
Being replaced and raised to proper height.
Proper height. The point, this is in the statewide area, scenic, wait, scenic area statewide significance, which is why it requires site plan, but it's not visible from either the historic sites or from the river. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Ronald C. Green, One Valley View Road. Site plan waiver, resolution number 2018-24. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Ronald Green for minor changes on a property associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in building permit received by the Building Department, April 23rd, 2018, and per the request to the Planning Board dated April 27th, 2018.
Second.
Thank you, Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next is a request from the new owner of, are you going to call it something different besides Carriage Trails or Crofton Muse or...
Come on up.
Come on up, Mr. Crawford.
Hello again. I assume that you're still wishing me a happy Memorial Day.
I do.
At least one more time.
For the, for the benefit of, or to avoid any confusion at this stage, we're just going to maintain the names of the prior site plan. And, you know, we'll market it probably as something else, but...
Good.
But, you know, I was gonna, I was told that the name of the company we picked was that of a...
A prior subdivision application.
Yeah, prior failed subdivision application.
Oh.
So we don't want to...
Steve, did you hear that?
So we don't want to put the horns on that. So we're gonna...
We could do a little, you know, contest.
Good, good.
Or we could, we could decide once you name it Elbow Creek, we burn some sage, get rid of any bad...
Yeah, yeah, that'll work.
I think we need to limit it to only one AKA's. I mean, it would be something AKA Carriage Trail, AKA Crofton Muse for all the files.
Wasn't it the Towny Center, too?
Well, Towny...
Carriage Trails at Towny Center.
That's, okay.
Yes, Carriage Trails at Towny Center.
Whatever causes the least confusion.
We were being sarcastic, because it was British spelling, old British spelling for Towny, and Centre was French.
Well, of course, we're going to use center, but with an E at the end, so...
Okay, fancy French, too, there. So, the request has been made for an extension of time in which the applicants, the prior applicant that conveys down to this new owner, already started substantial construction, so they need, they have two years in which to complete, which they haven't, and he'd like to have a two-year extension. That does require a public hearing, so make a motion to set that for June 6th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, sorry. The next one is a request from Jeffrey Greves Estates, which you'll recall that we reviewed earlier. But to explain this properly, so we are amending an approved site plan. To amend the approved site plan, the site plan must stay legally valid. It would be no longer valid unless we extend the site plan approval. If we did not do that, then he would have to start all over on the site plan, which you could do, but that makes no sense. So it makes a little more sense just to reapprove, or set a public hearing to reapprove, or to extend the ability of the owner to have the first year to start substantial construction. So make a motion to set that for June 6th as well. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
He really missed his turn, the first.
The penultimate item on the agenda is a release of escrow.
Have a happy Memorial.
Little day, one more time. I'll make this resolution. It's resolution 18-D, May 16th, 2018. I move to recommend to the Town Board to release a escrow for the projects, and then it's Quip Ground Cellar Mount and Porter Ground Mount Solar. The amounts are from the attorney, 97.50, and from the attorney, $237.50. Make it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Board, everybody enjoy. I'm sorry to have your hat on. Okay. Everyone enjoy Memorial Day. Ma'am, thanks for coming out again.
Thank you.
Consultants, have a happy Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Happy Memorial Day to the planning board.
We're not going to see you guys till after.
Our comments been...
I'm sorry. It's by Frank Von Luger. He signed in the front of the book, he signed it.
It's nice.